Magnetism, one of my favorite things to talk about in physics. Such cool stuff. So, we're gonna get into this today. Over here, I kinda outlined what we're gonna go through. There are four main things that we are gonna talk about. And we'll start out with just the definition of a magnetic field. You know about gravitational fields? Gravitational fields act on mass. Electrical fields. Electrical fields act on charges. And magnetic fields, finally. What do magnetic fields act on? The answer is moving charges. Okay. The symbol for magnetic field is capital B. And the unit is capital T for Tesla. Alright? Okay, so we're gonna work on drawing some fields around different things. Um, let's say we have a long straight wire. Alright, this is the easiest field to talk about. Um, cuz it's a very simple situation. Okay, so we have to, we have to be able to picture this stuff in 3D. And we will do that right here. Okay, so this is where we introduce the right-hand wire grabber rule. Okay? Now, don't write that on your AP test. If you write right-hand wire grabber, you might get points or they might get annoyed with you. Just call it the right-hand rule and that is enough detail for them to know what you're talking about. So the right-hand rule tells us the direction of the field. Okay, so this right here is the current direction. So what you do is you point your thumb in the direction of the current and then you imagine yourself literally grabbing the wire. Like if I take one of these cords over here like this and there's current going in this direction, I'm grabbing that wire. That means the field that it creates is going to be a circle around this. Okay? So, we're gonna have these circular fields here. Alright? And in front of us, these are going down. Okay? And behind the wire, these are coming up. Like that. Okay? And you might be able to see that, hey, this is two-dimensional sheet of paper. This is very hard to see what's going on here. And that is why we usually represent the fields with two-dimensional symbols. Okay? So let's talk about that over here. We've got the current going up. Alright? Same thing, except we're gonna grab it like this. And as my fingertips come around the other side of this wire here, like this, okay, you can see right here, okay? It's kinda like there's a dot on each fingertip. Or a lot of physics teachers like to say, if the field is coming at you, it is like an arrow coming at you. Which would be bad, okay? But the first thing you would see is the tip of the arrow like that. Okay, now on the other side of the field where, or sorry, other side of the wire, where the field is going away from you, we put X's. So if you imagine shooting an arrow, that arrow is going away from you now. What you're gonna see is the X, um, of the fins on the arrow. Okay? So this is the preferred way to draw magnetic fields. Um, this is what's actually happening. It is three-dimensional, of course. Okay? So, um, we have to be good at drawing diagrams, representing things with diagrams. And then we also need to know how to calculate the field. So, the field for just a long straight current carrying wire is this equation. Mu naught over two pi. Alright? And then we multiply that by the current and we divide by R, or radius. So, the more current we have, the more magnetic field we have. The further out we are, okay, this is radius, the field's gonna go down. Alright? That'll make sense. All of the equations that we talked about today are on your equations page. This is what we're covering. And we just checked this one off right here. Okay, so here's how this sheet's gonna work today. We are going to, um, talk about a concept and then we're actually gonna focus a lot on multiple choice today. I did put some FRQ-type questions at the end, but we'll do a concept, do a couple multiple choice, do another concept, do some multiple choice. Okay? So, pause and try this one. Alright, let's check it out. Direction of the magnetic field at point R is out of the page. Okay? And you'll see that a lot. Top of the page, bottom of the page, into the page, out of the page. So this right here, this would be out of the page, this would be into the page. Okay? Our thumb is the direction of the current, so you should've used the right-hand rule to solve that. Alright, next thing we're gonna talk about. We are working with wires in a field that the wire themselves did not create. So before, we just had a wire, like so. And there's current running through it. We talked about the field it created. Okay? Now, we are going to take a wire with current in it and it is creating its own field too. But that wire is now in another field. Okay? And it's the interaction between those two fields that cause a force. So in number one, no forces. Now in number two, we're going to talk about the force here. Okay? So, we have this equation to calculate the force. The force on that wire is equal to Bill. Okay? That is a handy way to remember the equation. Okay? Bill. So here's what it stands for. B is for the B field. If the B field increases, the force increases. Makes sense, stronger field. If the current increases, that's gonna increase the field that this wire is creating and that's in turn gonna, um, increase the force. And finally, L. L is the length of wire that is in the field. The longer length wire you have exposed to the field, the more force you're gonna get. Okay? Not quite done though. We are gonna go in here and we're gonna tack on a sine theta. Okay? Now, the theta is the angle between the B field and the current. So, right here, it shows that. Okay? And you can also kinda think of it as between the B field and the length, but technically, it's the current. On your equations page, this gets really dumb. Check this out. It's on here twice. And they use force M instead of F with a little b down here. I think F with a little b, I use that for force of buoyancy. F with a capital B is what I use for magnetic field force. And you can use that. Your teacher probably taught it to you like this and not like that. I'm guessing, maybe I'm the weird one, I don't know. Okay, so here's the annoying part. This is in here twice. It is the exact same thing. And I think the reason why it's in here twice is because some teachers teach Bill sine theta. Some teachers teach what's called a cross product. A cross product is any time you have a, um, the, any time you have the sine of an angle between two vectors. Okay? And a dot product, by the way, is when you have the cosine between two vectors. So, that's kind of a calculus thing. A lot of teachers teach it that way. So, just remember, these two are same. Alright? I changed the order that I write it in. I put Bill because it's easy to remember that way. Alright. So a couple good questions for us to take a look at here. We would like to find the direction of the force on this wire. Okay? So we've got this, this wire and it's in a magnetic field. The other thing going on here is we have to decide how this field looks. Here, the field's drawn for us. Okay? Here, it's not. So, here's how I like to remember this. The field lines go out of north and to the south. And in Colorado, um, for spring break, we like to go south. Just like the geese, because it is warm down there. Um, so that's how I remember it. When, when it's spring break, we go from north to south. Which is convenient for me, cuz that's about when I teach this unit. So, I draw the lines coming out of north and to the south. Okay? So now we have our magnetic field. And we have to decide the direction of the force. Here comes another hand rule. Okay? So, most teachers teach the right-hand rule for this. Okay? And the right-hand rule is F I B. Okay? So you take your fingers and you put them like this. Your thumb is force, I is current, and your middle finger is the B field. And you're gonna orient it like that, okay? In different orientations to try and find the force. Okay? Now, in my classroom, I teach the left-hand rule. And some people are going to kick and scream that I'm even showing this. Okay? But I have to for my students. So the left-hand rule is breeze. I am in the F B I. And that's one of the reasons why I like it. FBI, kinda, kinda catchy. Um, it's also the European method. And it was the way that I was taught to do it. So, it stuck with me and now that's how I teach it. So, most of you probably using this. My students probably using this until you figure out that I'm weird and you go with the rest of America. Alright? But I actually think that most of the globe uses this. Kinda like the metric system. So maybe I'm ahead of the ga-- I don't know. I don't know, I'm just saying. Okay? So, anyway, use whichever rule you would like here to decide the force on this. And then also do this problem. And pause the video and try that out. Okay? Here are the answers. This one, F is out of the page. Okay? Using the right-hand or Fleming's left-hand rule. Either one will get you the same thing. Okay? Then over here, um, the answer is C. Directed to the right. So we could draw that force vector like that. Again, if you got it wrong, check either method. Um, and by the way, we'll put this on here. Okay? Thumb. Pointer. And middle. Okay? Alright. So hopefully that helps with that. Um, just, now we can get the direction of the force and we can also calculate it using Bill. We'll work a little bit later with the sine theta part. Um, a lot of times, the angle is ninety, which is where we're gonna get the maximum force. So if we look at this, if we turn this like that and make the angle ninety between the current and the B field, that's when we're gonna get the maximum Newtons. It's also worth mentioning that if this wire is parallel to the field like this, there is no force. Because the sine of zero will make this whole thing zero. So, cool stuff. Alright, who's pumped about magnetism? Important situation number three. Charges moving through external fields. Okay, now it sounds like number two, but this time not in a wire. Alright? So we are talking about particles, um, charged particles being fired through some existing field. Alright, so let's start with this. How do we calculate the force on a charge? We know there's gonna be a force because magnetic fields act on moving charges. So unless the velocity is zero, then there's gonna be some kind of force. So this equation, magnetic force is equal to Q V B. Okay? And I should actually, I'm gonna rewrite that. Alright? And here's why. Q little V B. Okay? We cannot get this confused with voltage. It is the velocity of the charge. Alright? And then we tack on a sine theta. In class, I go over how basically that equation is the same as Bill. Alright? Um, but I'm not gonna take the time to do that here. Okay, so let's look at this. Q V B. There it is on the AP page. And check this out, just like with Bill. Same. Alright? This is redundant. I think they put this on there cuz teachers will teach it both ways. Okay? That's how we calculate the force on a charge being fired through a field. Okay? Another important thing, um, your hand rule that you use for the wire, for the force on the wire, applies here as well. Okay? But the problem is, the direction of that force keeps changing because the direction of the velocity changes because the particle is not constricted to the conducting wire. It's free to move around. Okay? So the shape of the resulting path is actually a circle. Okay? Um, since it is a circular path. Okay? So let's say right here, we're looking at the particle and here's the velocity vector. The magnetic force is acting inward towards the center. Okay? Just like before, the velocity, um, and the magnetic field are at right angles to each other. Okay? And also the, uh, force. They're all at right angles to each other. Okay? So this is the magnetic force, right here. And since they are at right angles to each other, the magnetic force is acting as centripetal force. Okay? So, takes us back to physics one a little bit. So we can say that F C is equal to F B. Alright? And remember that F C is the F net in UCM or, um, simple circular motion. Uniform circular motion. Okay? So we can go in here and we can say M V squared over R. That's our equation for centripetal force. Is equal to Q V B. And I'm gonna assume that the theta's ninety. So I'm gonna leave off, so sine, sine theta is gonna be one. Okay? So, let's say we wanted, say, the radius of the path. We would multiply R to the other side and divide by Q V B. We could also now solve for, say, the velocity or something like that. Okay? And it's interesting, take a look at this too. That and that actually cancel out. Okay? So we could be asked to solve for all kinds of things and there's some examples over here that deal with that. Okay? So particles being fired through fields instead of particles in wires. And then I even threw a little treat down here, check it out. An electric field and a magnetic field at the same time. Oh yeah! Okay? So here's what I want you to do. Try these multiple choice. And please, please, please do not just copy what I do. You will be getting nothing from this video if you do not try them on your own. Alright. Pause the video, work out the problems. Okay? You're unpaused. Let's check out the answers here. Um, the answer to this one is C. Okay? And basically, it's this situation right here. Okay? Magnetic field of point one tesla forces a proton beam. They give us the milliamps of the beam. To move in a circle, we've got the radius and the plane of the field is perpendicular, or sorry, plane of the circle is perpendicular to magnetic field. So we're gonna get that, that circular motion that we were talking about. And they even tell us that. Okay? So we simply are gonna take this equation right here and solve for V. So if you did that correctly, it's Q B R over M. Okay? And they want an estimation. This is a powers problem. So what we're gonna do is say that the charge is to the negative nineteenth. The B field is to the minus one. Okay? And you could actually plug in the numbers and put one point six times ten to the negative nineteenth right there if you wanted to. Um, and you'd get the correct answer too. And the radius is also ten to the negative one. And the mass, we have to remember the mass of a proton. It's on your constants sheet. It is to the negative twenty-seventh. Okay? So what I get here is ten to the negative twenty-first over ten to the negative twenty-seventh. And that comes out to ten to the sixth. Alright? Powers problem there. Okay? Interesting question right here. And I've seen this asked a ton of times, so we should pay attention to it. And we can use this question or this diagram I have over here. The work done as they go around in one complete orbit. Okay? Now there's two ways we can look at this. Um, the answer is zero joules, first of all. And the first way we can look at it is this. We can look at F D cos theta. Okay? So the work of the magnetic force. Was there a force? Yes. Did we go a distance? Yes. Okay? Cos theta. Um, if I look at this snippet of distance during this snippet of time, okay? That this force was acting in this direction, cuz it's always changing, we would say that the distance is at a right angle to the force. Okay? Um, and that's cuz the velocity is at a right angle to the force. So, if the force and the velocity are at right angles, and this is always true, there's no work done by that force. Okay? Other way to look at it. The net work is always equal to the delta K E. Change in kinetic energy. This thing is not ex-- I should not say that. This, I almost said not accelerating. Wow! This thing is not speeding up. Um, speed is constant, okay? Therefore, the kinetic energy is not changing. So the network done by the magnetic force is zero. Okay? Those are the two ways I can see to look at it. There might be another way to look at it as well. Probably the most important problem on the whole page. So if you didn't think about it thoroughly, go back and do that. I love this problem, so good. Okay? So we've got this charge fired through here and it is without deflection through the plates. Okay? And we've got all this information. We need to solve for the speed. Okay? So, since it is without deflection, what's going on here? Talk to me about the forces. Um, without deflection means it's not doing that or doing that. Okay? It's going in a straight line. So that means that the net force acting here must be zero, at least vertically. Okay? So, I'm gonna draw an F B D here. Okay? And I'm gonna kill my students. They love to mess with my pens and put the red in, ink in the green. Oh my goodness, they're so dead. Okay? So, here I have, um, F E. It is downward. And here I have F B, the magnetic force. Alright, now how did I know that F E was down? Let's take a look. Um, we'll use blue for electric field. So we have the E field lines. They're like this, through this thing. Alright? And, um, we know that because this is positive and this is negative. So W W P C D will tell us the direction of the E field. Since this is a proton, it follows that. Alright? So the electric force is down. The magnetic force is going to be up. Alright? And we know that because these two forces have to cancel. Okay? Now, the reason why that was super important to the problem is because we have to know that the magnetic force is equal to the electric force to get this problem right. Okay? So the magnetic force is Q V B. V being velocity, not voltage. The electric force is Q E. Okay? And we learned that in electrostatics. Alright, now check this out. Very handy. The charge cancels. Alright? And we get velocity is equal to electric field over magnetic field. Okay? So this is, this is actually called a velocity selector. Alright? And, um, these can be varied to get a desired velocity particle to end up, um, going in a straight line. The other velocities will deflect and hit the plates. Okay? So, if you look at the numbers here, the electric field is six Newtons per coulomb. Magnetic field is two, so the velocity comes out to three. Alright? Okay, number eighteen. The answer is toward the right and you gotta use your hand rule there. Okay? Either your right hand F I B or if you're one of my students, breeze. You are in the F B I. Fleming's left. Alright? So, work that out, doing this funky stuff, okay? Until you get it right. Um, and enjoy. Alright? We'll go on to the next section. Alright, kids, part four. Last, last big situation we have to know about fields, magnetic fields. Okay? So, I'm gonna start by drawing a picture over here. We are now talking about what happens when we have two conductors or wires, um, parallel like that. Okay? Um, so let's talk first about if we have the currents running together. Okay? So, we've got I one and I two for our two wires. And what we're gonna have to do is the right-hand wire grabber rule twice. So, take a second and draw with dots and X's for each wire what's happening on each side. You can pause it if you want. Okay? So if I grab these two wires like this, my fingers are gonna go away from me on the right-hand side of each wire. Like that. And my fingertips are gonna curl back around towards me on the left-hand side. So I'm gonna have dots. Okay? And when you-- Okay, and when you get. These opposites next to each other, they will attract. Okay, so this side, we're gonna get an attraction, okay? Those wires are gonna wanna come together. There's gonna be a force between them. Okay, repulsion. Is if we have opposing currents, so opposing repel. So I one. I two, alright, and what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna have dots on this side, just like over here. X is here. But, I'm going to have X's on this side. And dots on this side. Okay, so it's kinda like having two north poles. For some, from some bar magnets facing each other. They're gonna repel. Okay, so repulsion over here. Alright, so we need to be able to draw pictures. AP Physics two loves, um, asking us to draw pictures. And we need to know attract or repel. Okay, now calculating the force that is present between the two. Okay, let's look at wire one. Wire one. Is. Got this going on. Okay? Now, if we want the force on wire two, what is happening? Is wire two is in wire one's magnetic field and vice versa. Okay, and we know that for a long, straight, current carrying conductor, we can calculate the B field. Using this. Mu naught over two pi. Times I over R. So we end up taking our original equation from part one. And combining it with part two. We're gonna sub this in here. Okay, I should really draw my arrow that way. Alright, this is being subbed in for magnetic field. Okay, so we get this nasty equation that looks like this. Magnetic force is equal to. Mu naught over two pi. Times both currents, I one, I two. Times L. All over the radius between them. Okay, how far they are apart is R. Okay, not to the middle. R is the total distance between them, okay? People wanna divide by two there, so let's not do that. Alright, occasionally you might ask, be asked for the, um, sorry, the force. Per meter, or the force per unit length. Okay, and that would just be equal to the same thing, but I divided L over to the other side. So watch out for that. That could happen as well. Okay, couple multiple choice here to kinda put it into perspective. Why don't you try them both out, and then I will show you the answers. Okay, let's check it out. So, um. These are gonna repel, and let's double both currents. Okay, going up to this equation. If I double these. What happens is I quadruple the force, okay? Easy problem. Alright, don't make it harder than it is. Okay, easy problem. Steal the points and move on. Okay, down here. To get this one right, you really have to just use the right hand rule. Okay, so for this, I'm gonna stick my thumb into the page for the current, and I'm gonna do the wire grabber rule like that. Okay, and I'm gonna get these circles. That go like that. Okay, now for this one, my thumb's going out of the page. That's the dot for the current. And I'm gonna curl my fingers in the direction. Well, in the direction that they go. And I'm going to get circles that look like this. Okay, and you can see that those are always pointing down. Alright, so what happens here is you never get any cancellation. Um, some component of these are always adding together, so the answer is E at no points. Um, is the magnetic field zero. Okay, that concludes the multiple choice and, um, all of the content. Um, so we'll go on and do some F R Q type questions next, but, since you've been so awesome. It's time for Name That Nineties Song. Okay, this is a, uh, since magnetism is hard, I'm gonna give you an easy one here. Okay, so let's see what you can do with this. Okay, come on, people, you got this one. Um, if you don't know that one, you might need to study up on your nineties songs as well as magnetism, so, there you go. Alright, let's move on to the F R Qs. Here are some great thinking exercises that go along with. Things that you'd see on the AP Physics two test. So, try this whole page. And then I'll show you the answers. Okay, here's the answers. Please, I hope you've worked these yourself first. If not, huge guilt trip right now. You feel it? Huge guilt trip. Okay. Alright, I hope you guys did these on your own first, or you are learning nothing here. Alright, the statement is wrong. Okay, so here's a couple of examples. Where it would be zero, alright? So if I have this and I wanna use the right hand rule. Okay, to figure out what the field's doing at the center due to these other two. I'm gonna put my thumb into the page. Okay, for this one. I'm going to get the field going down right here. Okay, and then for this one, field's gonna be going up at that same spot. So what are they gonna do? They're gonna cancel. Okay, similar things for these as well, alright? So, here's some examples of when that can happen. Alright. Charged particle and straight current carrying wire, force, okay? Students arguing about physics, this happens all the time, right? Like on the weekend and stuff like that. Okay, so Aaron, Brenda, and Craig in a heated argument. None of them are correct. Here's my attempt at a drawing. Okay, and here's, here's the answer that I came up with. The particle will feel the force anytime it crosses field lines. Okay, and this is happen, this happens when it is moving parallel or perpendicular. So, parallel, right here, straight away, perpendicular, both of these are gonna get a force. Okay, alright, now Craig is kinda close, but what if for some reason the particle is. Following a field line, a magnetic field line. In that case, it's not crossing any field lines, so it's not going to experience a force in that situation. Okay, the last one. Alright, please don't be mad. I'm gonna show you the answer, okay? Please don't be mad. Alright, I'm gonna drop a huge bomb on this page with black G two. Answer is. Wait, wait for it. Same but not zero, right there, okay? Now they tried to trick us with these different angles here, but if we look closely. The B field and the current are always at ninety degree angles in every single picture. Okay, so what we're looking at here is Bill. Alright, um, to analyze the force, and. The length of the wires or D within the field, same everywhere. The currents are all the same, the B fields are all the same. And then the sine theta thing, okay, the angle between this and this is ninety the whole time. Okay, now, here is when. We would have a force of zero. Let's say I had this wire, but I oriented it going into the page like this. Okay, so I would actually draw the wire. Like that, okay, going into the page, or the wire coming at me, the current's coming at me, going out of the page. That would be. F equals zero, okay? Because I've got my current parallel to my magnetic field. Alright, let's go on to the very last part. A final test here to see what we've learned. Been working hard here. This looks like a lot of writing, but let me make this easy for you. Just do one short sentence for each of the six parts. Alright, pause it right now, work this out, and then I'll tell you the answer. Okay. Here are the answers. Alright, so look those over. And fix any that you need to, okay, and think about, think about why the right answer is the right answer. I hope you've learned something about magnetism here and had a good review. Thanks for watching.